That's her.
All right.
No, it's Brian.
Low call. Dawn Hauser.
Oh, it's you.
Present.
Cassie Peterson.
Here.
Jen Burgos.
Here.
Cindy Hills.
Here.
Brian Leitinger. Here. Holly Mindrum.
Here.
Roland Hill.
Present.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Let's do it. I have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All right, is there an approval of the agenda? Any revisions or...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Holly.
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Comments from visitors. Do we have anyone who would like to comment? That's not a part of our... I think you're on the agenda, so we'll keep you on the agenda, but if anybody who's not already on the agenda, you are invited to come forward if you would like to address the board. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to our scheduled presentations. The first is student council reports. Not sure if anyone from student council... No? Okay. Next is the REACH program, Ms. Borhav. And I would just like to note, kind of new this month, that Mr. Stifter is adding all of our strategic planning goals, so whenever we have something added on the agenda that relates to our strategic plan, then there will be a notation on the agenda, so this in particular relates to our goals 1, 3, 4, 6, and 7, so welcome.
Hello. You know me, I'm the Spanish teacher, but now I'm doing this class and it's part of the REACH program. Mainly this is support for students, you know, and this... LPS is, you know, support for students, and this is... This class is part of that. And these are not my ideas. This, all this material was born from Staple. Valerie Turner was introduced to me through friends and Kathy, Kristi, and then she shared all the curriculum material. She gives me suggestions. We keep in touch, and then she's providing a lot of support because I didn't know what I was doing at the beginning, you know? Now I think I know, but it's working. That's the most important thing. And so what it means is relationships first, education, accountability, character, and hard work. All in progress. And relationships, you know? The main thing is to create an environment where the kids can trust, you know, me, and they can trust each other so that they can feel relaxed and we can be in an atmosphere that they can feel welcome and safe, and that's my main thing, and I think we got that already. The second thing is the most important for us, you know, education. We want all of the students to be successful, pass their classes, and overall, I think we're making great progress. I got the majority of the students failing classes, one, two, or more. Now 50% are passing all their classes and some with excellent grades, you know, As and Bs and Cs, and we're not just a D, you know, not a survival D. So that's great. But again, the academic goals, the kids, we're going to see pretty soon the schedule, how it goes, how they set their goals, and then at the end of the week, we see how much progress they do. The last one, I mean, the next one is accountability. You know, a lot of the times, you know, kids have some kind of behaviors or they make little mistakes here and there, but they never accept that, or they are never, you know, say, oh, yes, I made this mistake, what do I do now? No, they are not. They are going to avoid the situation. Well, here, it's not like that. We have to talk about it, and that's what we do certain days of the week. Then we take a paper, and we're going to see the format in a few minutes, and they write their goals. And the goals not always are going to be academic. Okay, yes, I want them to pass their classes, but I want them to be okay, to feel safe, to feel happy. That's my priority. So some of the goals are going to be family oriented, you know, and some... I remember one of our kids said, I'm going to make the point to say goodbye to my dad every day when I leave home, and that's the goal, and that was great, you know? And it felt that the connection with the family, it got better. So those are the goals. And some are individual. I want to make more friends, or I want to talk in a class, or participate because I'm not able to do it. I feel embarrassed, etc. So those are the goals. Tuesday, academic work. So I just show them, all this you're missing, what are you doing today? At the end of the hour, they have to give me on paper or submit whatever they want, chemistry, physics, whatever it is. So, and that's Thursday, the same thing. Wednesday, we finish the lesson, or we just do bonding activities. We play games, or sometimes we prepare a project, you know, and we have done two or three already, celebrating somebody, highlighting, saying thank you to teacher, making flowers for their doors, and they want to... They feel really good when they do something for other people because they feel that they are not invisible, some of them, you know? The teachers say thank you, and oh, that's what's nice of you, whatever. They feel happy, and so we have done three projects so far, and it worked really good. And that's Wednesday, and we bond. We get to know each other. We play games, just like little kids sometimes, playing cards on the floor, and they're just laughing and giggling without their phones, without any distractions, not worried about grades or anything. And then Friday, we celebrate goals. Supposedly, I have to celebrate only with the ones that meet their goals, but I don't do that. I have to be honest, I celebrate with all of them, you know, the fact that they set their goals, tried, and we, of course, highlight more the ones that got all their goals. They are happy. They feel happy. I can see it in their faces. I can see it in the way they look, you know? Sometimes you see kids looking down, but now they look at your face, at your eyes, and you can see the change, how much it means for them. And then the next one. Okay, this is the goal that we do every week on Monday, and then Friday, we evaluate and then go over with them. So they have to be specific, something realistic, something that they can really reach in the week, and like I said, they can choose personal, family, or academic. The majority do academic because they really want to pass their classes. They really want to work on that. But sometimes they can choose, and they do personal. They really want to work on something for themselves. And also here, we did semester goals, so the main goals, we did it at the beginning of the class, and at the end of this week, we have to check those ones. But every week during this course, we have been checking. Next one? Oh, that's the last one? Okay. So now, what I'm going to say, I think it's working really well. I have seen that in other schools, and where this program is in place, it's fantastic the results they have. Here, I can see it in the grades. You can check their grades. They're doing fantastic, and some are still struggling, but they are doing progress little by little. On some days, everything is high, and sometimes everything is down, and I feel like patience has been the main thing, just waiting, you know, and working with them, and having faith. And now we're getting to the point that we said, we're all in this, we're all getting out, so they are helping each other, too. So that works great. And that's all I can say. Great program. Hopefully, we can think about it, continue with it.
I can't think of anyone better than you, Ms. Borhav, to lead this program, so thank you. How do the students connect with us if they are struggling with academics, or could they sign up if they were struggling with personal or family issues?
It's a volunteer thing, but it's not like I'm going to go and I'm going to say I want to go to REACH, no. The counselor talked to the teachers. We focus on 11th grade. So what are the students that were worried that might not pass your class, etc., that you are worried, you need a little extra support, sometimes TLC on, you know? So they gave the list to the counselor, then Kathy, the principal, Lisa, and myself, we met, we went over, we invited everyone, but not everyone accepted, or not everyone could because they had another class in the same time. This is second hour. So the kids that accepted, they are there, and some came later, but, you know, we welcome them, you know? And we have all of them like 11th grade, but we have also one template.
I love how you're looking at sort of the whole student.
I love these kids. I think they are amazing kids, it's just they needed a chance to be heard and be noticed. And one thing that I didn't mention during the slide is that some of the teachers that work with these students are helping a lot, you know, because they say, okay, this needs to do this, or tell that, or, you know, I'm going to work with this, but he has to do this, you know? And so things are happening due to all their support, and the counselor, too, because she's always checking their grades and sharing with me what's happening. So that's all what I have to say, so I hope it's okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Question?
I don't have a... Well, I do have a question. First, I want to say thank you for putting the extra time and effort into running a class like this. It's very different, but it's very needed, and so I guess my question is, how do we expand it beyond 11th grade? You know, we have other students.
That's a really good question. This is a really good question, but I think Kathy and Lisa Demart would have the answer for that, and just like a little pin on you, but they would put something on place, you know, in place because they did it with this and it's working. I mean, they know that we can do something great with this, you know, and they would have the time to plan, and, you know, I'm pretty sure that we do... I don't have the answers. I'm just helping. I'm like the old grandma with candy.
Well, you're placing the trial, and so that's important.
No, but I would be happy to train whoever or help, you know, share whatever I learned, you know, and I'm learning every day more, you know, how to help these students.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. No more questions?
Any other questions or comments?
This is a beautiful program, and I'm trying not to cry.
I know. Every time I check the grades, I feel like crying because it really touched my heart, touches my heart that they are making effort, and they can do it. They just need extra love.
It's really important work, and for everybody who puts stuff into it and supports it, amazing thank you to all of you, and the community that you're building with these kids in this group together. I bet they're going to have just this long-lasting friendship and community, and you're not just a P on, you are a F.
Yeah, one of the kids said, I said, I'm very close to retirement, and he said, no, I have to wait for me to graduate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the shirts plus logo.
All right, so, Casey was here last meeting. She came back. We asked her to do a few more mockups, and she has those for us.
And then the top sheet is just something I drafted for transferring the copyright from shirts plus to the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have enough for everybody?
I've gone to 10, I think. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you.
So last time I was here, it sounded like, kind of, we're leaning towards one of the logos, and so I mocked it up on a few different things, just so you can get an idea of what it would look like. The first thing is just kind of the general gobbler gear. There's several variations to do with it, but still, keep it uniform. The other, one of the other things we talked about was incorporating ISD-1 into it, and I think that would be really important, especially on like the letterhead or anything office type, so I mocked it up on a envelope so you could see how that would look, kind of using the same font as the Akin, keep it uniform. Next page, we talked about sports and how, you know, they like to do their own thing a lot of times, and how it would still be possible to use the Akin logo, but make it cool, you know, still have a football or whatever sport it is, but still keeping it uniform. And then the next one is just kind of staff, faculty apparel. I like to get an idea of putting ISD-1, that way it's not ripple side specific or Akin High School. And, yeah, we can just do the gobbler on the chest, or we can put the ISD-1 on the sleeve. There's lots of options, so I just mocked it up and give you an idea of what it looks like. And then for the last page is just a billboard idea. I know "we are ISD-1" is really big, it's an important saying, and so I thought that would be kind of cool to put on the billboard and see what it looks like, and not necessarily have it... Maybe we could put the gobbler on there, but I think that's more of the message that it seems like we're trying to get across. So that was just the idea.
Any questions, Casey?
I think last time, we kind of talked about the couple of different options with the font, and people were going to think about it. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts now, or...
I should have printed the other logos in thinking so that you could see it again side by side.
I like this package, but I liked this one the last time, so...
We want to move forward with this as it is. You said you have the information here to transfer the copyright, and we can talk more about that later in the meeting.
I like the flexibility with the different designs and options for athletics or different groups, say it's Akin Band, or it can utilize, or... So I think that's important.
Any other questions or comments? I like the idea of having kind of a start to our branding, right? And so it would be sort of uniform colors, text, or font, I guess not text, but font, styles, okay? All right, anything else?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
If you want, then I can move forward and put together a rough draft from the style guide that would be easy to follow for anybody that's looking at it. And then, yeah, you can let me know what kind of changes you want to make, but if you're from here.
Okay.
All right. No, I like it. Yeah, I think it's good. Yeah, it's cool. Can you make some 3X stuff for me? Good, good.
I know a place.
Yeah, that's what I said, please, yeah.
All right, thank you. So we'll address the motion later.
All righty.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy Casey. Good job.
Let you know when we wrap. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, old business. Do you want to talk about those policies?
Yeah, the policies are back for a second reading. First reading last time, you can read them there. There's four different policies. We just need a motion to make them the official policy moving forward. Motion second, a vote.
Make a motion to approve the second readings on the policies in 7A.
Motion by Holly. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Cassie. Any other discussion? So the purpose would be of your motion, and your second to approve all four of these policies, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, new business. We're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be 8A1 through
Why is our athletic director a co-coach in golf?
We have a head coach in golf that can't, but isn't moving here until mid-April, and then, so he's got a co-coach to help cover until Kathy Cooper get here. They're splitting the, they'll be splitting the salary.
The whole season, or is he going to be done then?
To get the start of the season rolling, and then there's a, she has a conflict in there after she's here. He'll cover that, but it's just, we had the one person apply for the head coaching job, and she's got experience in the golf world and in the golf, but just in the process of moving up here. He won't be here until like April 15th, 18th, something like that, so...
Where is she from?
That I don't have in front of me. Sorry.
So I just wanted to point out the youth philanthropy, can't get my words out, grants. Laura had sent us an email, and those kids did a lot of work looking through all of this. They're going to be in this consent agenda, so I didn't want us to just move past them without just saying thank you again for that program, and I think it's great that our kids are actually taking the time to look at this and determine how that money is spent. I think it's a really wonderful program, and I'm glad that we did it. With that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Holly to approve.
I'll second it.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion?
Was that youth graph required and banned? Did it get, was there a request from both and for $1,000 and $1,000, and then...
That was part of the conversation that they had. These kids are smart little cookies. They said the band put in a request for $1,000, the choir put in a request for the $1,000, and they said, it's the same trip. It's the same group of kids. And they said, well, if we're only allowed to give $1,000 to one program in a year, it's the same program, and so it all goes into the same pot of money. And so they were, they really analyzed that one, and they said they feel like it would be best to give each one 500.
Oh, is band and choir the same program? Is that kind of like...
Well, they're going on that trip to Chicago together, so it pools all the money into one.
They fundraise together, they do joint, you know? The fundraising is... Some of the kids are in both, and so...
So it's the same trip, but they are different programs, right? Because it'd be like basketball and wrestling is, they're sports, but they're different, right?
Yeah.
It's the same, they're doing the same fundraising together, it's...
It's all pooled into one big pool.
Yeah, it was a good, I mean, it was probably a good 20-minute conversation that they had on that one, and that's what they felt they wanted to do with it.
Yeah, that was good.
Good.
Any other discussion?
Before the vote, I do want, Cheryl Hess is one of the, is a teacher retiring this year. Cheryl Hess has been in our elementary sped for a number of years, done a nice job there. Just want to wish her well into retirement, so...
Yeah, I was trying to wonder, I was wondering how many years.
I don't, I don't...
It's a lot.
Yeah.
She was a classroom teacher.
Started off, I'll say, first, and then...
Yeah.
I think she was teaching first grade, and then she moved into our special department.
Yeah, she was Vera's first grade teacher.
Yeah, so thank you.
So thanks for her time, and wish her well in retirement.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes for the consent agenda. 8B is discussion items, Riple Side Elementary Staffing and Enrollment for 2024, 2025. And again, I would just point out again that that relates to some of our strategic plan goals that are listed there.
Yep, and our elementary, as you know, is really coming a three-section school. Two years ago, when, or last year, this year's first grade is in kindergarten, we had the larger number, it was 75 to 80. We added a fourth section. We added it again last year, coming in the first grade. Been asking for it year by year, so I would recommend, the recommendation is to the board that next year in second, this year's first graders move to second grade. We're anticipating 75 students, that we stay in four sections with them. You can see the number breakdown there, a number of kids in each class based on the number of sections we have. Going four sections with next year's second grade keeps us at 18, 19 students in a section, which is where, kind of where we're at, a little bit bigger than next year's fourth grade, but a little bit smaller next year's fifth grade, but that's got us in the ballpark. So I, at this point, I'm comfortable asking the board to approve four sections for next year's second grade, and at least do that one more year with that group of students.
What does this, don't we have four currently in sixth grade? Will we be losing a staff member?
Yeah, there could be some attrition there. We do have elementary staff that would bump back into, could bump back into the preschool program. We have, depending on other changes in staff between now and now at the end of the year. So, yeah, we will have one less section of students overall next year in the elementary.
But we do have a way to maybe not have to lose staff?
We have staff...
Possibility?
We did have a staff member hired on a one-year deal, but she had the understanding knowing that it depended on what her numbers were and that we were losing a section in our elementary, so we were upfront with that when the person was hired, so...
Is it unrealistic to have four sections in kindergarten? I know the number is 20 students projected for each class, but we all go kindergarten is...
The, when it comes, you know, I'm asking here at a time, so I'm not sure where we'll be sitting financially right now, or feeling comfortable that, and we'll probably end up deficit spending this next year, but I think we're comfortable doing that. I just don't know where we'll be next year at this time, as we, as all the CARES funding is dried up, and we have some grant we're working on, so I just don't know where we're at with that, so wouldn't be on, I mean, having a four section, you figure it's a minimum of $70,000 add, and then depending on experience, so...
Well, and it depends, don't we tend to have an influx sometimes? I mean, that's what happened to kindergarten a couple of years ago. We were lined up for three, and then suddenly had a boost in enrollment for kindergarten and went to four kind of late, so...
Well, right now, we're projecting about 56 kids, so, I mean, if you're doing that and you bump it to four, you're looking at what, 14 kids a class, like, that's just not financially responsible, I mean, to be honest. And, I mean, a lot of kindergarten, a lot of kindergarten classrooms around their stage are 25 to 29 on average, so even us being around that 20 mark for three sections is still very reasonable. We'd always love to have lower, you know, but I'm just saying, when we're looking at being financially responsible, it's not, you know, that's the challenge.
Thank you.
So do you need a motion?
I would like a motion and a second to approve, approve the whole thing, but primarily looking at that state of four sections in second grade or with that group. Yeah, so a motion to approve it has its, here would be great.
I'll make a motion to approve four sections in second grade.
I'll second.
And then, will you need a different motion then for the other grades?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's not out of the parameters of what we set a few years back.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Next is approval of the ICS Professional Services Contract. Again, that does relate to several of our strategic planning goals.
Yeah, and this is a, be our official agreement with ICS to do our work on moving forward with doing the community surveys and getting community engagement, staff engagement, board engagement with, what are we doing on, are we looking at building, or what are we going to do with our facilities? In the agreement, it gets us, you know, it'll help us get to the point of what do we do next, and then there's another tier where, okay, we're going to build, remodel, whatever, you know, but this, this helps us answer the question of collecting data so we know where we're going to be and what we can anticipate, hosting the community meetings, getting input from the community, various stakeholders, putting all that data and information together to present back to the board and the community, saying, hey, this is what, this is what we found, this is what we know, and this, you know, we can make a recommendation to, or we make decision then as to what our next step is, so... The agreement's there. I don't know if anybody has questions, or we've talked about this a number of times, just finally had a chance to get it worked out with Jeff Schultz, who we're working with with ICS. we're working with with ICS.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dawn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Cassie, any discussion?
They did a wonderful presentation at our work session, I just want our community to know that, that's why we don't have a lot of questions in our discussion, because he gave us a very great presentation.
And we have a long history with ICS, a lot of the work's already been done.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Next is discuss and approve the 2024-25 school calendar.
Yeah, so meet and confirm met a couple of times, or met, I think twice, put the calendar together, uh, they said they wanted to go to a staff, a teaching staff to vote on a potential spring break calendar, which would have had us four days, four days of class into the first week of June, um, or stay with a calendar, uh, more aligned with what we currently have, the, the vote was about eighty percent to twenty percent to go with this calendar, which is, doesn't have the built-in spring break and will get done that week after Memorial Day, um, they're a little, I mean, we, we need to approve the calendar, the, uh, REDACT, uh, it, which, um, was legislation last year and, and the staff development, and the amount of training that has to be done for certain staff could, uh, and, they're telling schools not to make their calendar yet, because they're not quite sure what it's going to require, and the schools are sitting here like we are, saying, well, we gotta, we gotta set a calendar for next year so we can plan, so, depending on what comes out of that, we feel comfortable, comfortable and confident that we've got time worked in and we're going to make it work, with that said, um, I've been surprised before, or, you know, we may have to come back and adjust some days here or there in the calendar, but right now, we feel like Kathy's cringing back there, but right now, we feel like we're in a pretty good, we're in a pretty good spot with, with having time built in and being able to use our staff development days to meet many of the requirements of the REDACT, so.
It can be modified, though.
Yeah.
If need be.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to?
Thanksgiving on the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
That's what it is, right?
Yes.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, but.
Javi, someone sent me a message saying that the board meeting recording stopped, I don't know if you.
The screen is not going to work until we're recording it.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Could have shared that, we'll put it up as soon as we're done.
What's November seventh and eighth for no school?
Right down in the next one, it's grading and data day, so that's their curriculum data day.
Yep.
And then.
Does say down, oh, yes, back to the old, does say on the bottom of the month when there's a day off.
Just says no school, all right.
On the little notes underneath. So on some of the, what you're saying is some of these like staff workshop days, we might be able to turn into those REDACT days if we needed to.
Yeah, if we, we, we believe we have enough time built in so that we won't have to adjust, but, um, when they're saying don't set your schedules yet, makes me nervous, so, yeah, any other questions?
We don't have a motion in a second, do we? No, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Motion by Holly. Seconded by Dawn, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Next is the school resource officer position.
Yeah, and, and again, I've shared with the board, but, um, I think it's tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with Paul Ryan and Amy, um, Dotzler to, to work on, well, I think Amy's working on it, just to fi, help fill in some blanks on the SRO position and the grant funding, that's a, um, there's a word for it, the grant, where the grant will cover, I think it's eighty percent of the, the cost the first year, the city and the school split the other half, then the, the grant pays less and less each year, um, and then the city and, uh, and the school, uh, pick, split the, the difference, um, Paul Ryan did say, and he thinks, granted, he won't be the police chief when it goes into effect if we get the grant, but he felt like there is staffing, there will be staffing that would be able to, the city would be able to provide, uh, school resource officer within the parameters of the position, so, uh, that was a good program when we had it, a couple of years ago, we went through cuts, um, that was one of the things, the city had some, you know, the city was looking for officers, it just worked out for both of us to step away from that, but, um, I think it would be good to have an SRO position back, and if, uh, the grant goes through, um, that we come to the board to ask for approval of that, so, I've heard from a number of board members over the course, that that's something you're interested in, some, and, and community members as well, so, um, and, you know, that, the concerns with the SRO and, um, the, the legislation and things that was passed last year, I never saw anything in our building, in our district, working with our SO, SROs that would have even been in that situation, um, so we were basically going to apply anyway, just kind of mix it, knowing that that's all clarified and taken care of, so, um, uh, I guess I would like a motion in a second, it's okay that we, like, pursue that grant with the city and that we would most likely support it, if, if we should get the grant.
So you're looking for basically a motion to support moving forward at this point?
Yeah.
And then, for the grant, and then we would have some other, we would have another opportunity in the future to, like, finalize it, right?
Yeah, then we get dollar amounts as to what it costs.
Heather, is that financially feasible for us, coming down to be able to cover that cost?
It would be.
And projections, I know it's just projections, but.
It would be an additional cost, and, you know, we're, we'll already be deficit spending, so it'll be more deficit spending.
Puts us down the road a little bit, so we may have something change along those lines, I mean, we never know, the school funding, not that they're ever giving us a lot more, but.
It's, uh, good to be optimistic, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but school resource, it, I don't know if there'll be more funding that would ever come that way, it is a, it is a big topic that every legislative session, um, and school safety, um, all it needs is the right person to come forward to legislators saying, hey, we should figure out a better way to fund this.
I remember when we first did this, a number of years ago, there was, um, a schedule where I think the first and possibly second year was fully funded under the grant, and then it was slowly incrementally increased to where we had to contribute, and then I think we got to the point where we didn't feel like that was, that was part of the budget cuts, right?
Right.
Where we gave that up, so, I do think that we would need to ensure that the funding is right and that the personality is right, and the duties are also, um, clearly specified, those were some of the issues that we had to work out last time, and so, um, yeah.
I would make a motion that we.
Pursue the grant.
Pursue, pursue the grant and, and see where we land, we're not, we're not saying yes or no at this point, but to.
Yeah.
Just authorize Dan to continue the conversation, and so, my motion is just to authorize Dan to con, to continue, pursue it, and turn back for everybody.
I'll second.
Motion by Dawn, seconded by Rollin, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried with all members voting yes. Okay, logo fee.
All right, so, um, Casey presented her information earlier in, in the, in the, uh, presentation portion of the meeting, uh, one of the things that she was asked was to, you know, and, and what she stated, we have a copyright transfer, we would own the mascot, I did have an anonymous donation since the last meeting, so we would have the three thousand dollars, uh, wouldn't cost the district anything, um, for that, this donation was specific to this, and if we weren't able to work it out, then, the, I mean, it's not, we could use that donation elsewhere, it had to, the person was, wanted their donation back, so it was specific to this, so, um.
And so for that three thousand dollars that's being donated, and then that what's being requested, is then we would own the copyright to the gobbler head.
Yep.
Mascot, and, um, there's no, um, like, requirements that we would have to go with one business or another, we would own that and would be able to.
Yep, we'd use it wherever she's mentioned it, I forget the term, but she's getting the.
Guidelines.
The guidelines or whatever.
And we would have exclusive rights.
Yep, we would have that.
To both paper, print, media, as well as apparel.
Yep. So, I read, motion in a second.
I'll move to accept it.
Motion by Rollin, is there a second? Any discussion?
Thank you for the donation.
Yeah, that was very generous, and I'm very pleased that we were able to work this out, this has been kind of a longstanding issue, and, um, I appreciate, appreciate Casey's willingness and the work that she's put in on all of this, and I think, um, we, we can be very proud of her work and proud of the fact that we can move forward, so.
I would just add, before we move on to a vote, Casey has been really great to work with, she's been reasonable, and it has, it has been really a privilege and a joy to spend some time with her and, and hear about the history of how this all came about, and, and then to come to a resolution, and she's just been fabulous about that, so, so I do appreciate that from her.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried with all members voting yes.
Thank you, and I would agree, it's been a long, long process, but we find everybody to the table, and then once we did, it went well, and it's nice to be able to continue to have that relationship with the local business.
Permission for the water tower if we want to, did anyone see that in the paper?
I did.
Yep, it, it wasn't that long, it wasn't that.
What's that?
This wasn't that, it wasn't that long of a deal, it went pretty good.
Well, for us, but it's been coming up for.
Oh, forever, I mean, for our deal, it moved pretty quickly.
Once we got, like I said, once we got everybody to the table, I need to be able, yeah, okay.
You know, good, good designers understand that, and they, she worked through it well, so.
That's what I meant, it just.
Okay, yeah.
Kind of been hanging there forever, nice to.
Decade or so.
So.
Okay, administrative reports, board member reports. Okay, committee reports? The egg committee, egg advisory committee?
I was not there, what are you doing?
I did not make that one.
Well, this is, um, February.
Train my jet intern.
February fifteenth one, I was.
And March fourteenth.
Oh, I, I made it to February fifteenth, you know, the, the primary, we're talking about, uh, different performance of the groups in the, uh, competitions, but we didn't have any of the final results yet, to go to state, and, hmm, that was, that was kind of the basic part.
Okay.
They have the equine team placed second.
Okay.
And companion animals, uh, both qualified for state.
Nice.
You know, I was there, Rocco gave a, you know, an update on what he's doing with the class and everybody, you know, they're doing meat cutting, that was, I thought that was pretty cool.
Is that the pen set up outside, is there an animal?
They have.
Yeah, a cow the other day.
Cow, I haven't seen it in the pen.
Yep, she was, she was there, they, they were milking her for flex time.
Might be part of Lisa's, yeah, Lisa's report, so, if she doesn't, doesn't get to that, I'll, I'll, I'll add a little bit.
But, you know, and then jump in, because it'll be in the March one, but, you know, the welding, is, the welding class through a community ed has been real popular, the wide range, somebody's eighty years old in that, isn't it, eighty-two or something?
How was the goal?
I mean, like, it was pretty cool to do that, he's definitely has a lot of energy, and.
They had, uh, yeah, uh, Pete Tech, is that who was in today?
American Pete.
American Pete, there we go, um, and they donate a lot of metal, and they had a couple guys come in today, and I didn't get down there, but, um, just talked about, they had used some of the metal to build welding tables and benches, and, um, came in and kids were telling what they did, and it sounded like our, our kids were wonderful, and, um, kids who maybe aren't going to be here stepping up doing presentations in the rest of our class were chatting away with the, with, with these guys that came in and telling them what they did and how they, how they worked, and, um, Rocco was flying pretty high when he came out of there, he's pretty proud of the kids and how they handle it and everything, so, um, that was a good way for him to start a Monday morning, so.
We also discussed the robotic piece in there too, Brian was having, who filled them in on what we saw down, or what he saw down in, um.
Oh, in February.
In, in the February meeting, he also, you, you updated everybody what you saw in the conference, so, and I think we're working on some of that stuff.
We're going to head on that.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Call that later, okay.
Cool.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Meet and confer meeting?
And that was a calendar we just approved, so.
Okay, personnel committee meeting? I think that one got reset, didn't it?
Yeah, well, it was a, uh, we had to just discuss posting positions where people have auto-field placements or out at their tier one or two, um, we have to post the positions, uh, in order to hire the person back, has to be posted for up to sixty days, so we post them early, um, I mean, we get licensed people, that's diff, I mean, that changes a little bit, but, um, as of this point, I don't believe we had any, any licensed people apply, fully licensed people apply, um, for their positions, so, it's helped meet the, the posting deadlines, and, and we have mostly, in these positions, we have good staff that if they're willing to stay and keep working, and we want to, we want to keep them, so, but, that was a big discussion there.
Transportation committee meeting?
Yep, we had, got to catch up, oh, there we met, um, we have a old bus we're going to auction off, the bus doesn't, I mean, it doesn't run anymore, we've been stealing parts off it, it'd be more of us, so we could buy it for storage, then we have a van that we're going to take to auction as well, um, and auction that off, um, Heather, I think that was pretty much.
I think we were looking at new buses too, were we, we were going to get some pricing on some?
Yeah, we're getting pricing on, uh, the new buses, the, the challenge, so when I started, we, the first bus bought was like ninety-two thousand dollars, which I thought was crazy, now we're at about a hundred and forty, that's five years, so that's, uh, and we're about a year and a half, two years out on ordering buses, so, buses that we approved, we, the bus we'll get this summer, were approved two years ago, not, yeah, not a year ago this time, the year before, so, um, we are looking into, um, bus pricing again, so.
But, and then also just the power, how, what you use for, what, where you go with fuel, you know, whether you're, you're diesel or gas at this point, um, you know, there's incentives for electric, uh, you know, there's, there's probably up in this area, it's not really necessarily that feasible, but, um, the, uh, you know, you, so you look at, because there's going to be some phase outs here in the future too, when you're looking at different, um, the way the engines are going to be, so, and, but, you know, we also have issues with repairs and stuff, and the, I shouldn't say issues, it, you know, there's parts, how to get rid of parts, and what's easier to work on versus that, you know, gas is easier to work on than diesel, um, so, there is a little challenge there to match the right bus with what we need and what we gotta, what we gotta do, so.
Okay, policy committee meeting?
Miss Facilities.
Oh, sorry, facilities and finance.
See, I thought I was going to be one step ahead of you, and then you jump right over it. Um, yeah, we updated, uh, facilities list, we're looking at, um, some of our sidewalks, if you look on, at the high school, and, and the elementary, we've had some redone, but, uh, I, you know, it depends on what the city's going to do, um, at one point, they said they're not sure when they're going to get the third street out in front of the north side of the high schoolers, but now, that, that plan may change, and the concern is, about, I feel like the time we fix the sidewalks and the street's going to get ripped up, and we'll have to do it all over again, but.
Oh, man.
Um, I don't know where the city's at, so I'll have to follow up with Lana on that. Uh, we also discussed the fax room that had the fire in last fall, there's a countertop that's got to be specially made, and, and, uh, while it, uh, serve pro, kind of dropped the ball on getting that order, getting it made, they thought it'd just be a standard counter, well, it's got to cut in and fit around the window and around about three other things, so, um, we're still waiting on that, there's a communication here on getting that done, um, for the auditorium at ICS, picked up the, we found, Steve found the nineteen forty-six blueprints for the auditorium, which I thought looked like they had the rigging information in them, but I don't know how to read nineteen forty-six blueprints, but ICS picked those up last week, and then, uh, they will, uh, take a look and see how, if they can tell off their, all their monitor, otherwise we'll have to cut a hole. we'll have to cut a hole into the ceiling, which isn't, my understanding, isn't a big, big deal, so they can actually do a visual inspection of it.
What's the difference? Is you can't read cursive writing?
I don't, I probably couldn't read a twenty twenty-four blueprint either. It was kind of cool looking at them. I mean, just, but, yeah, I don't, I don't know what, what it looked like maybe where they were gonna mount something was just a measurement and, yeah, so I, reading blueprints, so it's probably my, my issue.
Okay.
There were smoke doors in the auditorium. We had hoped we could maybe just close them up and do some other things for smoke and fire prevention and the reason smoke doors are there is that was, whenever they were put in, that was the best fit for it, so we had to, we had to have some springs replaced and some seals replaced there. You know, I didn't realize we get a wind and a rain that they were leaking and there was some air loss, so everything sealed up and is back to where it should be working the way they need to do and one of the things with those was inspections, supposed to be inspected every six months and the inspector comes from southern part of the state, but Steve Snyder's been able to, will be able to do a class or do something where, I think he's already done it, what they asked him to do, so he can be the one that's inspecting them on a regular basis and I think we have to pay, we have to have the person come up every couple of years and do the official inspection. Paint booth in the AG, we're waiting on, just waiting on a revised quote. Just, not in the AG in the shop. It's trying to get it so we can vent out so we can do more than water-based. We can do some oil-based stuff in there. Right now, we can do water-based, but they'd like to be able to do more and use the oil base and, but the exhaust system in there hasn't worked for a long time and it's all buried in the ceiling, so we're working on getting a plan there, so. Capital LA forums are sent out to admin and staff and they should be working on them. Football field is showing some signs of wear and tear, so we're looking at getting an updated quote to split seed and maybe some irrigation. Talking with Alan, he didn't think irrigation was as big a deal. If we could get some work done, some work done on redoing, getting the surface back in place, so. And then we talked about our next steps with the land and we'll be coming back to that later in the meeting. Questions?
Okay, Policy Committee meeting?
I was at Policy, so I can talk since Stan talks so much. This one actually wasn't, we didn't have, most of these policies were very small changes, like in our Health and Savings, that's just the contribution numbers had to be changed and all of the other ones were basically their Minnesota stature numbers or whether they spelled Minnesota state law out or if they put it in abbreviation. So it was a pretty easy month in Policy. They're all, our MSBA approved, so they were just on our, on our rotation this month, so not a lot from Policy.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have approved the policy's first reading.
You don't have to approve anything. It's just first reading, right?
Right, yeah. Probably just acknowledge the first reading, yeah.
So, if any questions on those, they'll get back to me before the next board meeting, so we'll bring them back as the second reading in favor.
Okay, next is the Principal's Report. Mr. Dawkins?
Uh, yeah. This year, the fourth grade just went to Seaquest, referring to finish up their ocean unit. They were able to dissect squid and feed squid to animals in the aquarium. Sixth grade choir is preparing to join the seventh and eighth grade choir for the spring concert at the high school. Sixth grade choir will be collaborating with the middle schoolers for the first time, so kind of cool opportunity for them. Third, fourth, fifth grade music students have been learning to play new recorders that were donated by PTO and members of the community. The new recorders have silicone keys and thumbrests, allowing students to make quality sound on a recorder at a younger age. They're also learning to read music and refining life skills to just communication, focus, flexibility, patience, and teamwork. Curtis, the new owner from Rosalini's, came in and worked with our kindergarten students, made individual pizzas with all the kindergarters, brought in some hats for chef hats and they had a good time. Sixth graders are starting their research projects. They're choosing a famous American, writing research reports, putting together presentations as well, and they also just completed seventh grade registration. Very excited. Dave is coming from Rutgers to teach, work with our kids during involve units, during their PE classes, so he's gonna be here March twenty-seventh to twenty, or twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh. Grade three has been corresponding with their grand friends. They're also looking forward to the end of the year launch, which is May twenty-second at the American Legion. They celebrated Einstein's birthday last week and Pi Day last week as well. Each of the three teachers here, their lessons are on Pi Day, which is exactly what Pi is and how they can use it. They included reading a fairy tale, circumference and the dragon of Pi. The teachers dressed up in their Albert Einstein and Pi Day attire. And the end of the day was serving sixty-four students pi.
Do they still do the contest on how many digits they go out? Three point one, four, five, two, nine, seven? I don't know. Yeah, I mean, like, the students go out lots of digits, I remember, so I wonder if they still do that.
My, one of my little third graders that came to get a haircut, they do. So, his neighbor had already got thirty down and he was gonna work on it.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
Thirty digits?
Yeah.
Past the three point one, four, like, those don't even count.
Yeah, I'm good at that.
Okay, Ms. DeMars?
Mr. DiPaolo has been working with the Riverwood Healthcare Center and some of his FFA students, and so they're packing food boxes for, to deliver to Palisade for adults that are fifty-five and older. So they did that in February and then they're doing it again this month, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Roland, if you, I know they're going this month or the beginning of April. I can't remember exactly the next date, but they've been doing that partnership, so they're gonna continue to do that.
Nice.
The Minnesota State High School League had their vocal solo ensemble contest last week in Crosby and we received fourteen superior ratings, four excellent ratings, and two with a rating of good. So, they came back, they were very well pleased with how they did. So congratulations to those students. They worked really hard. Eighth grade student Jeffrey Bressard won the middle school spelling bee and so he is gonna go on to compete at Sorceville and Staples on March twentieth to hopefully win the national spelling bee in Washington DC. So, good luck to Jeffrey. And then, Mr. Carlson's rec life E-class went to Brainerd and learned how to curl. So, the curling center, we want to thank them. They donated their time and the instructors' time to teach kids how to curl and use a facility and stuff, so that was very nice of them. They had a really good time. Mrs. Sanders took twenty students, twenty women, to the Women in the Workforce event at the Minnesota North College in Grand Rapids. So, women went, the, I think there were juniors and seniors that went and they explored non-traditional careers that women go into. They heard from a couple of speakers, visited some booths, and Jet funded that opportunity for some of the students to go, so that was wonderful. So, we thank Jet for that. They had, Jet has been very supportive in providing transportation for our students to be able to have different opportunities, so that, they have been really good. We are working on our career fair as well in September, where we have interactive, lots of different booths, so that planning is starting already. So, they are wonderful partners with that. Let me think here. Fifth graders, they are working, I'm sorry, not fifth graders, eighth graders, they're working on simple machines in Mrs. Boyd's class and they are designing different mousetraps. So, it's really fun for them to present their mousetrap, to see if you can put out the flame of a birthday candle. So, it's always fun to go and see how their contraptions work. So, they, they were carrying them in today, two people at a time, the eighth grade board, so it's been.
Lots of that.
Yeah, lots of that. So, that was fun. Ninth graders will take the piece out next Wednesday. We have twenty ninth graders that take that for a college readiness skills test. Last week, we had our first health fair with the students. The health class from Hill City came and participated along with our seventh through twelfth grade students and we served eighty-eight community meals at the end of the day between four and six o'clock. So, for our first event, that was, that was good. We were happy with that. The BPA results last Friday, I was talking to Mr. Miller and he goes, there was over fourteen hundred students there. I didn't realize how many students were participating in that. So, different students qualify for nationals, so it was just really fun to see all the different events that students were participating in and who was there. In digital media production, Joe Brucker got third and he qualified for nationals. Alex Mateka got ninth. In presentation, Alan Mateka got second and qualified for nationals. Graphic design, Chloe Nyberg got twenty-eighth. Podcast production team got tenth. Kobe Van Porble, Chloe Nyberg and Levi Berg were part of that team. Prepared speech, Kobe Van Porble got eighth. Presentation team, they got fifteenth and Hannah Jones and Kenan Driver were on that team. Small business management team got fifteenth. Jackson Klein, Kennedy Jorgensen, Nick Carr and Grayson Klein were on that team. Visual design team got ninth. Omriel Henigwez and Madeline Shireen were on that team and then extemporaneous speech, Nick Carr got twenty-ninth. So, it was just really a good experience. The kids came back very happy with where they were at, so that was really fun. Today, we had the top ten senior party for academics. These students have worked so hard and did just a really great job celebrating. They were playing catch, they were having, blowing their little noise makers, they were having, wearing crowns, they were having food, they had cake, they had pizza, they had tons of food.
I got some really great pictures.
Yeah, and so they just, they had a really good time. That Sophie Morris, Breckin Williams, Mallory Leitinger, Kendall Ratz, Josie Kostick, Alex Mateka, Chloe Nyberg, Lexi Hills, Tyson Sogen and Gavin Justin. Congratulations to them. They worked very hard, as well as all of our seniors have. You know, the crunch is coming. They're on crunch time to get to the end here and so it's trying to have that motivation to get to the end. The National Guard is coming on Wednesday to talk to the seniors during third hour this Wednesday just to kind of help them keep that motivation going to the end. And then they're gonna provide teacher for them. And then Flex Day, we had, started our first Flex event last Wednesday, thanks to Kathy Christie, who is helping coach the teachers along on how to schedule kids into a Flex event. So, yes, we had a cow last Wednesday. Kathy, Mr. DiPaolo offered for his Flex event for anybody that wants to come and milk a cow. They could come, so last Wednesday, kids signed up and we had kids trying to milk a cow with by hand, so that was really fun. This Wednesday, he's doing, what's the difference between a donkey and a horse? So, he's bringing a donkey. So, the cage, I think that is gonna be the permanent fixture and then they are kids, anytime he can bring an animal, he's all for it. Bless his heart, it's great. So, kids are learning how to play different things, how to do anime, they're playing cards, they're going for a walk to the river and their class patch is maybe gonna be dedicated.
Car maintenance, car maintenance is another one, right?
Yeah, how to change oil. So, teachers are just kind of coming up with things that they are interested in, that they think their kids might be interested in, throwing it out there to see who signs up. So, it's just kind of fun. Some stay the same and some change.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think wrestling had two entrants down at the state tournament. Kenny Erickson and Nathan Trotter scored six, was up on the podium, so, yeah, lots of fun things for all of our students.
Lots of things going on and I'm trying to, I throw it out to everybody, put things on here, but, yes, sometimes I forget things, but yes, thank you for remembering that.
And then, I throw it out, Hannah Jones was a junior recipient of the Excel Award. She was recognized last weekend at the state girls' basketball tournament. She was representing Region Seven, I believe, or Region Red, so.
Yeah, lots of good kudos, right, to everyone. Thank you.
Lots of great kids doing great things.
Yep.
Okay, Community Education.
All right, so before you had mentioned Youth and Flex, I had it on my list. I wanted to thank you guys for giving me the trust to just kind of let these kids have at that and it's been really, really fun. They see me in the halls and they're like, when's our next meeting? How many grants do we have in so far? Like, they're, they're in and the conversations are very intellectual and they ask some really good questions and they have some really good conversations and so I'm, I'm excited for the future of it and it's been a fun, fun endeavor with that. I just got an email last week. We have a last minute opportunity to host a presentation by a woman named Lisa Kraus. She's, she's with Parent Coach Connection. She's a certified family life educator. We're partnering with McGregor Schools and then Aitken County Child Abuse Prevention Council to bring her in. We'll have a light dinner and then she's gonna talk on the developmental highway, which is a lot about like overindulgence and how to not just give in everything, how to keep your kids on the developmental highway. So, that'll be April ninth. You'll be seeing a lot more information about it, but I wanted to get that out so that you can help us further work, because it's kind of real last minute, but hopefully, hopefully it's well attended. Next week, we have a bus trip to the James J. Hill and Capitol Building. This is a spinoff of what sixth grade does. I was on it as a chaperone last year and I'm like, this is really interesting. We should do it as a community trip. And so, we've got some people signed up and ready to go, so it should be fun, but we still have some room on the bus, so if anyone is interested. We have our Minnesota Age Friendly Grant. It's technically, the grant funding ends March thirty-first and so, but this was the grant that we open our schools up to the community, the woodworking, embroidery and welding, to provide class opportunities and spaces for people to come in. Our goal was to reduce social isolation. We had, we've had, so far, we've had six woodworking classes with seventy-two people that have attended. Many are the same people each time and it's just a hoot. Sometimes it's these, these older women using power tools, maybe for the first time, and so that's been kind of fun. Not anything too crazy, but, you know, air nailers and that sort of thing, so. And then we had six embroidery classes. We've got thirty people attend that. And then, new this month is Rocco's welding class. We've got fourteen people enrolled and like you said, they were, they were in there, supposed to push it to eighty, I think, one person was. That, that's just taken off. I think he's gonna have some, some traction with that one too, so that's been a fun program and I think just the tip of the iceberg of what we can offer the community with our spaces. Our next accent, at our last Advisory Advisory Council meeting, it was recommended that we have the accent slated to come out June first, but everyone asked that we have it come out earlier because then it can have summer, come out before summer, and so we're gonna push it and do a short turnaround and have an April, May first accent, so deadline is like April first. So, do you have anything? Yeah.
The meeting is wrong in the accent and I know it's because it was always seven o'clock. It's wrong in everything that it's ever listed on because we moved our school board meetings to six thirty.
Oh, I'll make that correction on the next one.
Yeah, it goes in the newspaper like that, like they put us in our local government one that's listed at seven o'clock too, because it was for, like, ever. So, and I've caught it like every month and every time I'm like, I should tell her that and I forget, so.
Yeah, thank you. We sometimes just kind of take this page and put it in the next one and, so deadline April first and then our next Advisory Council meeting is Monday at four, so next Monday at four. There's lots more, but I'll stop there.
I think as a part of the community education, I can report too, I'm working with the Grad Blast Committee. I think the registrations are coming through Community Ed and so the Grad Blast Committee has been working very hard. I think Michelle Alcox is one of the leaders on that committee and they've solicited a lot of wonderful donations from individuals as well as community partners and they're working hard to get all of the seniors registered to be able to take part in the Grad Blast event that will be held immediately after graduation, so please encourage all seniors to sign up for that and any other people who are interested in volunteering. The committee is always looking for people to do that, so.
And one of the youth grants was for yearbooks and that is for, hopefully, it said in there like seniors first, right?
So, what they were gonna do with the, the yearbook grant application that they have is that they wanted to purchase yearbook is that they wanted to purchase yearbooks for seniors that maybe, you know, they're sixty-five dollars and so maybe that's just not within their budget. And so those will be for seniors. Andrea Cool is going to go through and figure out who those people are, offer them the book and go.
I thought that was wonderful.
Yes.
Nice, yeah, thank you. Okay, Superintendent's report.
All right. Enrollment update, enrollment charts, they're making comparisons. We are down eight students from February. Few grades, slight increase, few grades with decrease. And in the end, we've dropped eight students. And other numbers, it's, it's there. It's, I don't really have any more information to address that at this point, so. But you may, you can see that in the chart and see comparisons where we're at the rest of the year. But we are down from the start of the year as well, so. Which typically that does happen, but it's, it's always a concern when our enrollment's going down, so.
Well, this is like the lowest we've had for quite some time.
Yep.
Are we, are we collecting any data that you can collect on them? Are you doing any exit surveys or is anybody talking to anybody?
And last board meeting, I was asked that and I said, not really. But then my principals corrected me and they do, you know, they do try to get information from, from families or kids as they're leaving and the answers, and they can jump in if they want. But it's kind of all over the board from going to online to various different reasons. So as far as having to fill out a survey or something like that as they leave, it's nothing, nothing along that lines that we're, we're not doing.
Yeah, so like generally at the elementary, I do follow up, I try to follow up, phone call with families asking if there's specific reasons.
Were you finding any continuity of reason behind it?
It varies. I mean, there's a handful that it's just a good fit maybe to do online based on mental health or things like that. Maybe five, six of them are that way. And then the rest are family situations where they have had to move for one reason or another to different towns.
Have you had any that specifically have mentioned any staff related issues, teachers or anything like that or administration that?
Just one. In my building.
One?
One.
Okay.
You know, at the elementary, they say it's nothing that the school's doing, it's just family choice or they move.
As we're looking at enrollment, moving forward, you know, we have seventy-seven, am I on the right line? Seventy-seven seniors and we're projecting bringing sixty in. So we're looking at, you know, seventeen less students just at the get-go next year because our kindergarten classes, we're, we're projecting sixty, so. As those bigger classes in the high school graduate out and we're bringing in sixty kids, our enrollment's going to continue to go down. So and that just, there's fewer kids in the community, so. Started, when our open enrollment figures are figured, we're plus on open enrollment that, you know, our homeschool numbers are up, I think our online, our online numbers would be up as well, so. But as far as going from one public school to another, our, we're on a plus, I think it's plus sixteen direct open enrollment from one public school district to another, so.
You know, it's the easiest, I'm sorry, Don.
No, I'm good.
It's, it's, it's easiest to, you know, retain students than acquire new, of course. And I think that's always something that you kind of, kind of look at is more of just all the, all the time of retention. If there's anything, you know, like I asked for continuity, is there any specific reasons why? Things like that. And you can actually specifically drill into those and kind of address those as they, as they go and more so. And you know, as you look at it too, is, is what you got, you know, we get, we get told this in the meetings, but you know, maybe even write some of that down so we know. I mean, it's just, it makes it a little easier if we have good, we see these, but you know, over the course of time, starts, stuff, things start looking different. You know, they're all going here and not, you know, then maybe there is reasons that they're going and not saying anything. Sometimes people don't say anything either. I mean, I, I get it.
Well, you can only go off of what they tell you.
Yeah.
You don't know, not everybody's going to be honest. I know one of the things that as our leadership team is exploring the online school, because we are allowed to do that within our borders without an application process, so we're looking at that. I know five of my families wanted that option and they couldn't offer that to them. So they did go online. So that was something that we could have kept five students for sure if we would have had that option. But at the time, we didn't have that ready to go.
Ms. House?
I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, when I look at this chart, a year ago, we had fifty more students than we have today. And I'm wondering, at what point do we lose enough students that we have, that we start losing staff? Because unfortunately, money follows students. And so I have concerns about it. You know, if you have fifty fewer students than you had a year ago, that's a significant amount of money.
But you have to keep in mind, remember, we graduated out ninety-three and only took in seventy-seven. So of that fifty, you take a chunk for our seniors that left. So it's not truly fifty.
But if we look at the numbers and we're only expecting sixty to come in and we're graduating out seventy-seven this year, we're going to be down seventeen more students. So we're going, I mean, just because we have fewer children in the community, we're going to have fewer students.
Yeah, so we had, we've done some right sizing in the elementary already. A couple of years ago, we made cuts there to adjust and to kind of get us closer to a three-section school there. We have one more fourth section coming into the high school yet next year. So in the following year, we're going to start making adjustments. You know, it's, not that it's easy in elementary, but in elementary, if you, if you're going from four to three sections, it's one classroom, whereas in the high school now, it's, you lose one hour social studies, one hour of science, one hour of math, one hour of English and two hours on the elective side. So it's not, still equals one position, but it's not one person now, so. So yeah, we'll get, it's, so to answer your question, I anticipate next year at this time, we're going to be talking about having to make some of those difficult decisions. And we're holding off a year, we're in a deficit spend, but we're in a position where we can afford to, to everything shakes out with the care's funding and we kind of figure out where everything's going based on all the legislation that's been passed in the last couple of years, so. But yeah, next year at this time, we'll have to be talking about some changes in high school programming for the following year, so.
It's, it's worth pointing out, Dan, that Aiken is not unique in this situation. Many districts are losing much higher numbers of students than Aiken. Brainerd lost ninety, Walker Hackensack lost one hundred and seventy in one year. There's, yeah, so. What about the schools like Park Rapids, Mora, Rock Ridge? Well, Rock Ridge is.
Rock Ridge is hard to tell.
They're hard to count. But you know, the ones that enhance their campuses?
Yep.
I mean, are those increasing or they, are they, I mean, is it a track?
I don't know, I'd have to, I haven't looked at, they're on my, on my area that I looked at to make comparisons for. That would be a good point.
If you could do, and you know, some of the campuses have made enhancements and no matter what it is, I guess, let's look at that and, and see, you know, because if we're not, you know, the kindergarten class is less, well, does that mean our less families moving here? Are we, you know, where are we at with that? Is it, you know, everybody says the housing, there's housing issues everywhere in the state. But as, so I'm not so sure if that's unique to this community as any other community.
Well, it's just a fact that people are having smaller families. People don't have ten children.
Yeah, well, that's from a, sorry, that's from a, but it just didn't happen overnight. And these are some things that are starting to move, you know, even a little faster than I would think, so.
So some of our neighboring.
Laura's also looking at expanding our offerings. She's looking at funding sources this spring, yet it puts two months further back now, but trying to get kids earlier, you know, get in our system earlier. Because once, generally once we have them, they don't leave. You know, in the year from numerous families, how this is the best move they've made for their kids, you know, bring them into our system. So, you know, we're hopeful on that end too, to try to get more younger, younger students and families into our, into our system.
Our neighboring, some of our neighboring communities are going to have to make some tough choices in their budgets this year too. I'm not wishing that on anybody, but that may end up benefiting our district as well. When, if they cut programming, that is incredibly important to their families that we're still offering. We may see a rise in enrollment that way too, through open enrollment.
Okay, legislative update?
Yeah, just a couple of things that are on there. We already talked about the SRO law and we're moving forward, looking at grant there. One of the funding mechanisms that's being discussed, I don't know if we'll gain any traction, is long-term facilities and maintenance. There is a little bit of a pusher discussion about getting roofs and roofing added to the LTFM funding stream, which would allow us to levy for some of those costs. Right now, it's not, it's, it's part of our, basically part of our general fund. Another thing, it won't necessarily impact us right now, is a seasonal rec bill. That's to offset lost revenue and operating referendums. Where season property owners don't pay any portion of the operating. We don't have an operating referendum right now. Not to say down the road we wouldn't, but this, just to look at, not that we want, you know, the bill isn't, proponents of that aren't pushing that seasonal rec, have to start paying on that. It's looking at another funding stream through the state to offset some of those losses. And it really, locally, more local came to head is Grand Rapids, as you know, maybe don't know. They ran an operating referendum last fall and it got voted down. Their referendum request was the same as Ridgefield, same dollar amount, but it was going to cost about ten bucks a month more in Grand Rapids than it did in Ridgefield. Ridgefield passed easily, Grand Rapids didn't. And the idea is that because Grand Rapids has so much vacation land property, the local taxpayers are having to pay that much more. That's on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, so if you figure, so. Again, they're just hoping to get some equalization on that. And there seem to be two big things talked about in the legislative sessions right now. Just when we go on my list, there are questions.
I think you can keep going.
Was it ten bucks a month more or whatnot?
It was about ten bucks a month more in Ridgefield than it was in Grand Rapids at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Eleven bucks, eleven bucks a month.
Opposite.
In Grand Rapids compared to Richmond.
So the same, running the same dollar amount was a.
Just because of the way the taxes.
Just because of the way the taxes are set up.
Just because of the cost of tax base.
So, that helped. Robotics, it kind of came up already. We are, I do have a couple of people interested in potentially advising robotics. You know, salary, there's going to be an expense there, but we've had some, again, businesses interested in that. But as, you know, as we add, the budget becomes a concern as well. But I think robotics is one that, it would be, would be an awesome co-curricular plus an academic program for us to add. And now we got some interest in that and potentially maybe going to check out some, there's some first robotics competitions or shows yet this spring. Maybe we'll get a potential coach down to check that out or maybe even take a few kids that might be interested, so. Kind of moving with that. Lisa mentioned the health fair, we had good turnout for that, a lot of good comments in regards to how our staff and help people get set up, our kid volunteers, student volunteers and just how they interacted. And one person said, I'm not sure what I, with a credit union, she said, I didn't think, who's going, what high school kids are going to stop and talk to a credit union? She said she was busy all day long, kids were stopping and asking and doing the little interactive stuff she had going on. So people were impressed with that and, yeah, which was good.
My kids love their debit cards from the credit union.
Well, I still do.
Lisa also mentioned a career fair planning in the fall. That was a big hit two years ago. Jet early gets behind that and, and our high school counselors as well. And just get a lot of different careers in, schools in. Third Street North of the high school will be blocked off with all sorts of big equipment and stuff for, for kids to go out and try. You know, so that's coming in the fall. If you have a business or know somebody, one of the challenges is getting local, you know, local businesses to participate because it's, if you're outdoors or construction, it's kind of crunch time in September, they don't want to lose a day or lose a half day. But you know, if we can get somebody to come in from the local vendors, you know, it might, maybe down the road, it would help them, maybe get a kid to hire for the summer or get a kid to come work for them down the road. But, so we do pretty well with the different labor unions and the colleges and tech programs and, and like that. But you know, just the, the local business to come in and set up and chat with kids about some opportunities they could have right here. If we get more of those, that would be great. Moving on, the liability, property liability, auto and workman's comp insurance. We currently have that with EMC. Last year, we approved the bid, the price, there was talk amongst the board that they wanted to go out for bids. There is some work that goes behind that. I don't know if it's a good time to go out for a new bid. We had some claims this past year. I've been told the market's tight. EMC run has, ensures many of the schools, I did email out to other suits, other districts, there are a few other companies, but many districts use EMC. I guess there's a board still wanting us to see if we can find different vendors to bid on that, different, beyond EMC.
I think it's probably good to do that maybe every four or five years, but usually if you're doing it every year, it catches up with you.
It's probably been four or five years too. So we will, that's still a wish of the board, I, and we'll pursue it. But I don't, again, it's probably a good thing to do, it's just there's some work that, and Heather's already begun some of it, so. We'll go forward with that. Any questions? And now that we approved the ICS agreement, I did have a text in to Jeff. We'll start planning some listening sessions with staff, the board, community and get that process going. I did meet last week with the superintendents from Mora and Grand Rapids. They're open to having tours come any time, so you know, I might reach out to community, you know, state leaders and see what we do for dates and maybe go a couple of different times to each. More of, Grand Rapids, because they've done the elementary and they've worked with ITRRB and used some of those funds to get some of the infrastructure. More with their new facility, but newer elementary, new high school, but I like the collaboration between with their healthcare and their gym and the connect, you know, so I think there's some things there that we could see. But I'll just kind of get some dates. Both superintendents, they just let us know, we'll make it work. So I don't think there's a whole lot of restriction on their end. It's just we got to find times and trying to get everybody together on a date probably isn't feasible, but maybe we plan two or three different trips to each and go from there and see what we get, so. Couple of things to add that I didn't have on there. The high school and the county are currently, we had met today and Kathy and Jim have been working on a grant, already grant with the county and using some opioid funds to help. Have a person, hire a person through grant that could work with education of, of chemical abuse and address. You know, right now, when we, when we find somebody, whether, whatever the chemical use is, vaping is a common one. We give them consequences, but we don't really have a good program or don't have the staffing to follow up with any type of education. That's, that's what this, this position would hopefully do. County does have some funds from the opioid settlement. We would use some assist funds to try and fund this position and would be, we get two different grants that we're working on and you know, if it all, all comes together, this could be a benefit, not only to school, but to the community. And there's no secret that vaping's an issue here and everywhere in, in schools right now, so. So we hope to be successful on both ends with that grant and would be able to fund the position in full through grant dollars, so. Any questions on that? And then just one, Steve Snyder sent me a picture this afternoon. New tennis courts, we've had some minor vandalism done on them already. He found a pile of rocks, looks like kids were skipping rocks off of two of the courts, which did some scuffing. But there's two burn marks, looks like kids were lighting fireworks off of the, or kids, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't blame kids. Somebody was lighting fireworks off. Somebody was lighting fireworks off of the tennis court, so. We just had the two courts open for the last few weeks. I think they opened up the rest of them last Monday when practices began, but it's those two courts that were open early that have some marks to them, so. More of a frustration in letting the board know, so that, yeah, there you go. It's frustrating, so. And I, you know, do we lock them up when our kids aren't there? Well, that's not really the intent of it, but it's, yeah, so.
Do we have cameras?
Not out there.
That's what I wondered.
I mean, that's probably.
They could all put in cameras.
Yeah, I think we should.
I mean, the city has had to put cameras in the park.
Well, and you think, I mean, are the new dugout over in the softball area and all of that other stuff with the walking path now around and that, we're going to have a little more.
Infrastructure and everything out there to do that, but that's something I can check on.
Well, we put all those extra light posts in, we can't, make one a camera.
Swirls around.
Yeah, so. Anyway, just if you have any update, give me the bad news.
We're in outdoors, many people go out there every night.
Yeah, trail cams.
Camp out with my dog.
Trail cams. We'll ask for donated trail cams. We like to replace theirs.
Looks pretty good.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention is I know that we did a lot of work with the strategic plan and so I've had some conversations with Mr. Stifter about how we want to make sure that we're moving forward, some of those discussions. So I know I mentioned that we're trying to add the topics onto the agenda when we're going to be addressing those. But I wonder if we want to try to schedule out some work sessions for the remainder of the year and then maybe just have topics. I don't know if we want to take like each, each of the five pillars and just schedule something. So if that's something that you're interested in, I can work on that with him. Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll look at doing that. Anything else? Anyone has? Okay, then upcoming meetings are listed there. Meet and confer, personnel, safety, policy, agricultural committee, school board meeting. The next one is April 15th at 6:30 here in the media center. And then again, meet and confer and personnel committee.
I have an email in to see if we can do the April one in Melmo, but I don't think I heard back if we can or not. So if we can, I'll let the board know and get those changes made if we want to go down to Melmo in April.
Okay, yeah, I think we talked about that in January, right?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Anything, anyone would like to mention, bring up, add next month, anything? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Holly.
Second it.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, anyone opposed? Motion carried with all members voting yes. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
I would just add this sentence on to here before we sign it, just to clarify, because she's just.